Welcome to the January 23, 2020, this school board meeting. Would you please join me for a moment of silence?
Right, tonight from Crestwood High School's ROPC program, we have Delby Wacowski, Patty Craig Stokes, and Nathaniel Gore. Let's give them a big hand.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. I would like to add 4E, uh, the resolution.
I'm sure I moved to approve with the addition of 4E resolution.
Second.
You have a motion to approve in a second. Any other additions or changes? We vote, please.
Would you rescind that again, please? Thank you, it showed up.
It's been a long month.
We got it now. Six yeses.
Next, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Um, I think under 2C communications, I don't know if this matters or not, but that was actually Ms. Reed's great nephew instead of grandson.
Have any other corrections?
Moved to approve with correction noted.
Second.
Motion to approve with corrections in a second. Other comments? We vote, please.
Voting is open. The justice?
Next is public comment on actionable items. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Next, we have recognition.
We have no staff or board recognitions, but we do have student recognitions. Uh, tonight, I would like to ask Ms. Melinda Fortner to come forward and Marisciana Castello. Marisciana is one of our elementary students, and Marisciana had great growth in reading skills from the fall to our winter benchmark. And so congratulations to you. Keep up the good work, and we'll get a picture. Thank you. We would like to also recognize students from Creekwood and Dixon County High School that are in our Dixon leadership. And so thank you for being with us tonight and watching this process for the board meeting. And so if we have not signed your form, any of these folks sitting out here, our directors can sign those, and you will not have to stay the entire time. I will not tell. So thank you for being with us.
And next, we have staff report recommendations. We have anything under?
No, we don't.
Okay, next, we have finance.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Valerie.
Firstly, we have the monthly report. So revenues are a little bit up compared to last year at this time. At the end of December, expenditures are a little bit down. Property tax is a little bit down, sales taxes up. Utilities are up, diesel fuel and gasoline are down. If the money break down, you'll see the summary financial statement summary level total for all of those, 141 through 177.
I'm trying to question.
Yes, Mr. Healy.
On the, the sales tax reports, if I remember correctly, they are in arrears. So this being January, what should be reported on sales tax would be in November? So you get those once a month and once a quarter. Would it be difficult to maybe share the progress of those from a sales tax? Maybe a graph showing the sales tax and how it's running? Maybe we put it from year to year for last year to this year and to kind of keep up with steady growth that we see in sales tax? Thank you.
Have any questions on the monthly reports?
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion to approve the monthly reports in a second. Any other discussion? Vote, please.
Voting is open. Six yeses.
Motion carries.
Quarterly report, second quarter. That for 141 through 177 as well.
Have any questions for quarterly reports?
Move to approve.
A second.
Motion to approve in a second for quarterly reports. Any other comments? Vote, please.
Voting is open. Six yeses.
Motion carries.
Amendment corrected, so they did have the payment amendments to do approve last month. Um, but they have the corrections that we talked about, the payment section where I had made an error in my Excel form. I was going, I don't say anyone on 1022, and the playground as well.
I want to make a motion to rescind the motion that we had last month to approve the amendments since they were not correct.
Second, the motion to rescind the amendment from last month.
Do we have any other comments on that?
Are we talking about?
The one we voted and approved last month. Well, we're sending that votes and those were not correct.
Thank you.
Vote, please. Oh, you're gonna have to add?
I did it.
Okay.
Vote, voting is open.
Well, I hit yes once. Thank you. I apologize.
Six yeses.
Is that for the second month, the? Thanks for saying, I don't know. You said it's standing or?
I can't think of it.
Okay. Did the other one say it's standing?
No, I guess. Okay.
Yeah, I just, I thought we were. Well, it's the same, it's the same thing that we just voted on.
It was, but it says the motion, though. Yeah.
Yeah.
To rescind the approval.
Yes, I just, I just.
I guess vote again, I'm sorry.
You just wanted to make sure.
No problem.
Yeah.
Wha- what's the, do we know with the number that we're going to try to ask the commission to move from fund balance to make these amendments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Have any other questions about the amendment correction?
Or I can vote, I'd like to have, I'd like to know why, uh, other services of Stalor are over budgeted. Contract service.
They're contracted to the 390 line items?
Yeah.
Okay, so I had brought that a few months ago when it was asked of me, and so uh, I can pull up that document.
I think that's the line item where we hired for fine arts Ms. Kimberly Daniel on contract.
This is 72310. Look at 72310.
Yes, Dr. Nash and Kimberly Daniels. Okay. Did that answer your question, Mr. Chadwick?
On that one, it is.
Okay.
620. 210.
72210. So that's the one where Ms. Kimberly Daniel was paid from?
Our fine arts coordinator.
Yes, and then we also had Ms. Adams in that line item before she was moved back into as an employee.
We actually, we're not just budget enough over these items that came up after approved the budget.
Well, for Ms. Adams, once she retired, you have to wait a 60-day. And so to push her back as an employee, we had to move her to another line item, and so that caused the influx there. And then what was the other one? Dr. Nash? Yes, Dr. Nash, he's been with us for, this is his, I believe, fourth year, uh, but he did not get added in, and we kept his contract.
And look at 46510. Look, look, looked all the way across.
Uh-huh.
Is there a common or wrong place?
Pizza?
46510.
That's 5030, yeah?
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
What's, what's 46? Where are we at?
It's in the revenue.
The revenues, okay.
That wasn't the one I was looking at.
You're welcome to look.
Get that, I'll, I'll. That's not the one I was looking at, sorry.
Do you need just a minute, Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Are you sure? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Um, just one of the, the reasons that I have a question, I have a concern about going to the county commission and asking for additional funding to come from our reserve is because additional funding to come from our reserve is because of our investment income. And I realize that's one of the numbers that is on the the MOE and Valerie, you and I've talked about that. But we currently have a hundred and ninety-eight thousand budgeted and we're almost at a half a million, which gives us around three hundred thousand in revenue that that we know for sure that we're going to get because that's already come into our system and those dollars are already in our funds. So that's one area that raises concern for me. I think there's probably some other line items where some are up and some are down, but that probably we would be saving somewhere in this budget, another two hundred thousand. And I, I realize at the end of the day, next June, it's really not gonna matter because the bottom line is gonna be what it is, but that's a reason that I have a concern going and asking the county commission for us to take additional funds back at this point.
That's the will of this board, then I can definitely change that number. But we spoke with Mayor Rawl and he said that, you know, we are, we can change that number if we so choose to. But next year, you know, it might look a little skewed because we would have increased our budget in that line item to half a million dollars. And then next year it'll be back down at a hundred and something, or maybe two hundred and something thousand.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Haley.
I understand that concern, but I want to comment on the scheme of the budget. And I guess it's how you look at the budget process, but I look at this amendment as our mid-year update, which we've done every year. And we used to do one at the end of the year and we got fussed at for doing it that way, so we went to a mid-year. This is what we've done the last several years at the request of the county government, the legislative body that funds us. They want to see an update. It can be up, it can be down. Usually the expenses are up, it's all based on the way the MOE comes out. We're not allowed, this is more for the general public and the watching audience. We're not as much just under half a million overspent, is that we're not allowed to count our sales tax. And we have to meet, the MOE has to be met by the county, so they keep that number on an average, a five-year average. So, so I asked you for the sales tax report. We used to do a sales tax report and it let the board kind of know we were on track for where the sales tax that are earmarked for public education that have to go into our revenue at the end of the year. That, that's why we come in, in the black on our audit for several million dollars is because sales tax is continuing to maintain or grow. And by tracking that, there's a really good indication that we're gonna be a minimum four to five million in the black at the end of this year, likely more. And that is not money that we don't know is coming. It's not like it's a Christmas gift and then the year, it is what's not being allowed to be budgeted. So the audit that came in last week was fiscal year ending twenty-four. If I get my years wrong, correct me. Because that gets very confusing, but we had an increase our reserve running day fund, whatever you want to call it. You know, went up to somewhere in the thirty-two million dollar range. That's after we took fifteen million out the year before to do some well-needed, well-passed due improvements that for several years we weren't allowed to do. Now we have roofs that need to be repaired, we have buildings that are, that need to be updated and we're allowed to use that money the year after it comes in, almost in our bank account, to pay cash for not to put the county into a position. This is the best process to protect our taxpayers. We're doing taxpayers right by doing it this way. We're spending what is there, not what we're projecting to come. But we can also see for this year what's projected by sales tax. If it bottomed out tomorrow, I think we're far enough ahead this year that we would break even or better. So with those sales tax reports, I think it helps the board see where that revenue is coming from for next year's audit. So while it looks like we're almost half million dollars overspent or is, it would be implied misspent, that's not the case. It's where we took a budget last year that was presented seventeen million in the red that we need to operate our schools and we cut it down to seven or eight million in the red because we knew we needed that in, where we cut a lot of line items and got them so close that we have some overspending in the process, but the overspending is not unforeseen. Are some of these positions like the the two she mentioned, could they be alleviated? Sure, the board can vote to alleviate those, but doing it by a budget amendment is not the way to do it. We, this is our money that we're not allowed to budget at the beginning of the year and we're still well in the black protecting the taxpayers. This is just under point five percent of total revenues, this amendment is. Probably one of the lower ones I've seen in past years. I like shorting the budget up mid-year. That way at the end of the year, we shore it up again, we have a real vision of what's going on. So I just want to pitch that in there. We're, it, it, it's there, it's our money, it's the kids' money, it's the schools' money. Thank you.
Do you know, top of head, Miss Brogdon, what the last year's amendments were, the number, you recall? Just keep close.
I'm glad you're the chairman.
I'm just talking through the chair here. You could ask her, I'm just talking to you.
I do not remember.
Do you recall, Ms. Valerie?
Um, like the change in?
From fund balance to, 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 how mu- how much in the amendments did we do at the end of last year?
Well, I mean, the fifteen million was a large one, so that was part of it.
I don't know, that can be answered on the fly because you'd have to pull up the document from last year. I didn't reject where I shouldn't, but it's really.
It's okay, I just, like I say, I didn't know if you remembered off the top of your head.
I've seen yours, it was more.
Questions about the corrections?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve and a second to approve the amendment corrections. Any other comments? Vote please.
Voting is open.
I did, but it's not. I'm not getting the thing at the top.
Ms. Brogdon, yes. Mr. Chadwick, no. Ms. Langley, yes. Ms. Langley, yes. Ms. Parker, yes. Ms. Field, no. Or yes?
Motion carries. Next, we have maintenance.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have Brad Martin from Lyle Cook and Martin here and Jeff Corle to talk about the Dixon County High Sports Complex.
So I think from the last working session that we had, we went through a lot of Q and A, talking about all kinds of options and what, what you want to do as a phase one construction project, what you don't, and a lot of emphasis was put on the football field. We talked about baseball, the field, whether we should do minor upgrades or maybe look at that as a, maybe a second project, as a more bigger capital project. We talked about the soccer field or in the drainage issues and the track and so forth. So really and truly, I think we're here to answer questions as a continuation from that last meeting. I don't have anything new to present. I, I did look at potentials for the baseball field as far as upgrading the concession stand and the scoring tower and, and the toilet and all that. And what I came up with, I don't like because you're so tight back there. But I'm not sure that's a hot button for you to, we discussed to anyone, so I can go further on that if you want me to, but.
I think what we're asking of you all. We hadn't started drawing. We get to go. Running out of time, we don't watch out, we're gonna run out, we're gonna lose another year. That's gotta be done very good, but that's the main thing. If, if, all the questions so far have been baseball field, soccer field, pickleball courts or tennis courts, there hadn't been one comment about the football.
Or question.
Or no negative or no question.
Multi-sport facility. Multi-sport facility.
Lacrosse.
None, too.
I think that's what really we're here kind of asking you all. If we could get a go ahead on that.
Mr. Parker.
This section, I'm gonna go off this drawing, y'all, y'all gave us with the sections right here. Section A has got the football field, the track, four tennis courts. This is fixing the bleachers, the, as we discussed, we're making it where it don't drain onto the field and then adding the handrails, doing all the ADA things, upgrading the bathrooms in that section and all that. Football field, tennis courts, bathrooms, ADA bleachers, fixing the draining, fixing the doing all that with the visitor's side bleachers and the four tennis courts with the lighting. That's moving field goals and moving the scoreboard right now. Motion to approve section A.
Second. Motion to approve section A, a second. Any other discussion?
One question. Kind of had left out there, like we didn't know if we want to replace scoreboard. That could come later. We approved this tonight, does that have to be held down?
We can show you exact cause of differences further if we get further and you have to.
There will be.
Just, just to clear up, Ms. Langley, I, I do remember that, but my motion was, so it's written correctly, was just clearly to move the scoreboard and to move the field goals. We're currently, the motion's to reuse both of them.
And the motion is to move forward on section A, the football field.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Is that?
Yeah, there was some discussion at the work session about using a construction manager, I don't know. We've had stages or you want to make that a part of your motion, Mr. Parker, I just.
It's the recommendation from Lyle Cook and Martin.
Well, you heard Lane Lyle's dissertation.
Yes.
Pertaining to other projects.
Yes.
So, so this one has, is a larger project with as much complexity to it, so I, I would recommend the same system or something similar, but we can come to you at the appropriate time and, and explain that further and get approvals for that.
Mr. Haley.
I was gonna add that, that while this covers section A, and I'm in support of it, there are some other sections I'm, I want to see addressed tonight that might get added. And I think the construction manager, while it's the best way to go, I'd rather see it be a blanket over the entire project when we got it done, not just this section. And if it can be added later, that's fine. If we need to do it after we finish the sections tonight, I want to cover everything because it's, it's all one project.
Madam Chair, it, it can be added later, I just didn't know what the role of the board was, but it, what I'm hearing is, is let's just approve the monetary and then we can approve process at a, at a subsequent meeting.
Any other questions? Can we have a vote, please?
Voting is open. Six guesses.
Motion carries on proceeding with the football area on A. What discussion do we want for other areas? Mr. Parker.
Section C, we got two tennis courts right there. Is that, that was what was drawn of it. We were discussing between tennis courts, pickleball courts. And that was pretty much all that was going on right there in section C.
Right, and, and there was some equipment that would go in there, shot put or whatever it was for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That really is everything's moved to the field.
Right. I'd like to make a motion to approve section C with the tennis courts.
Second.
Motion to approve section C, which is the practice football field with the tennis court addition.
Madam Chair, one question, just about documents. Am I right? It's C on this one, but it's B on this one. It's this one, I think. Okay, always I've been looking at my phone, because that's, it's B on it, okay. So we're saying no pickleball stripe thing, right?
I'm doing it according.
I'm definitely saying approve with the tennis courts, straight tennis courts.
Two, two additional to the four we already created.
There's no other place to get two more tennis courts. All A, there are places, I'm the reason, use that, you've already done six.
Right. I was just thinking like, we heard that matches often went way late.
Think this would be two additional that could use with the other that were gonna be on the football field. There will be some there.
There'll be four.
Six totally, for term.
So this would be the two additional that we needed to make the six.
Yes, ma'am.
Four on A and two on C. Yes, ma'am.
I, I forget, does this one have a lighting or lighting?
It did have lighting in this package, but I, I don't know what we're.
Number four, the Musco lighting for them.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Because we had a separate contract for the Musco lighting.
Yeah.
But perhaps that was for a different field.
Can I comment on that, Madam Chair?
Mr. Haley.
We approved the lighting, but as far as the funding of it, we haven't, the funding of it, some of it came out of capital improvement. This will put it in this project. Anything we do in this project, the funding will fall under this project. And if I'm not mistaken, the Charlotte School and
both softball fields.
Were, were done from the general fund.
From, from capital.
This line will go under this project.
There you go.
This does have Musco lighting in it.
Any other questions?
I'd like clarity on what is exactly in this. Because we've got are, is this the dollar amount you're talking about, the three hundred and thirty? Minus the two hundred, so are you talking about a hundred and thirty or how much are we talking about for this?
I'm under the understanding that the pickleball courts, you gotta grow this pickleball, but the pickleball tennis court, the, the price didn't change, right?
Right, at this budget level, master plan.
Correct. So build tennis courts was, I guess, my motion, be option thirty. So that would be the two hundred thousand.
Yeah, and, and keep in mind, these are budget numbers, pre-engineering design numbers, but they're based on data that we retrieve from, from subcontractors and vendors and so forth. So the act. from subcontractors and vendors and so forth. So the actual we come to you and we develop the documents that the construction manager and the board pricing will be tested and put out to the market. These the numbers won't be exactly like these numbers. We're going to do everything we can to stay as close to these numbers as possible and would love to go under, but at this point, they're master plan budget number.
Were you including the cage? Or the the discuss page, the roll away visit page?
Yes.
So you're saying everything in C, just the tennis option, not the pickleball.
Correct. With with the lighting, everything we're taking the tennis court option is is what the motion is. Yes.
That was my second, three hundred and thirty.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions about section C? Have a vote, please. Voting is open.
Then when we get add more things to it, anytime we can always, once we get farther along with this, then we can add other items as we go along. You may have some more we want to add right now.
On the past motion, Ms. Brogdon, yes. Mr. Chadwick, yes. Ms. Haley, Mr. Haley, yes. Ms. Lampley, yes. Mr. Parker, yes. Ms. Thiel, no. And carries. Do we have any other questions? On any other parts of this complex?
Y'all go ahead. I made enough motions so far.
The case I do. I'd like to also see us include section D. That was in the original discussion when we talked about designing. Keeping that field as usable and updated as possible. There's some drainage issues to be repaired. It needed handicap access, the running track absolutely need to be updated, whether it be for practice or for public walking. And the lighting on that uh, field needs to be uh, done to match the rest of the school complex. So I'll make a motion that section D also be included with this plan.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve section D in a second. Any other questions on the soccer field area?
Can we vote, please? Voting is open. Motion carried for uh, section D, which was the soccer field. Have any other questions or comments on the sports complex?
I guess you just need to show us what you drew about B.
The baseball portion.
We got nothing else to discuss, I'll say.
And and just as a clarification, Haley, I think that last part D, the the lighting was an option, but you want to go ahead and light that to be on par.
It was in my motion.
Okay, well then I need to back up. I did not understand that in in D. I because that was an additional pricing of of two hundred thousand. I did not understand that in my vote, so I'd like to be recorded as a no vote, please.
They can make a motion to rescind also and maybe talk to Mr. Hall about that if if no one else understood it.
Be the best way.
We'd have to rescind the action or re-vote it, however y'all want to handle it. It does take a motion.
To rescind.
Since it was the last vote, can can she not just ask the chair for a re-vote since we haven't really moved forward opposite vote?
I'll just make a motion to rescind that vote to redo it.
I'll second the motion to rescind.
Just so we
keep it clean.
Yes.
Same sheet. I'm good with that.
Okay. We're sorry we're making it hard on you, Dr. Collins.
And that was.
That was D.
Yeah.
Rescind the last motion over area B.
That's correct.
Second was.
We need to vote on that. So do I need to make a motion to rescind? I made one and Mr. Say second.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry about that. You're fine.
It's okay.
Six guesses.
If you want to restate your motion.
I would like to make a new motion, restate that. Uh, you know, and the whole point in this project is that we all work together, do what's best for our system and for the community. This is more of a community project than it is just for the school. And by doing the um, the sports complex where the football field is now, it's going to restrict some public use. The public uses the high school. They always have and hopefully they always will. It's their money, it's their community, it's their school system. And the original discussion that started a couple of years ago on this included keeping the public access and and keeping as much of the complex as we could. So I think it's in the best interest of the community that we approve section D. So my motion is to approve section D, including the lighting, to make that complex is usable and functional for practice, for public use and for uh, other events for the school. So my motion is for section D, including the lighting.
Mr. Parker.
Before you before it gets a number two, can you clarify on your motion on what you want to do with the track? Whether it be repair or replace?
Well, what they presented to us was running track improvements, and I think that's going to be what they're going to do next on the next level.
Perfect.
Um, the original resolution a year ago, um, these numbers fall well within what was discussed then for that complex. Once we start getting into much more than we're getting outside of that spectrum, but we still have the money for this. We're under what we discussed. There's no need to not do the lighting, go with it, take the entire hill match with lighting. That's all we have left for the soccer field. The baseball's done. The now football field, future sports complex will match. The softball field is done. The parking light is all anything. It would, now's the time to do it.
I'll sit.
Are you gonna? I thought we already had second.
I'll second the motion for approval.
Go ahead.
Right.
What's there cleaning up patchy and give what they call a structural spread.
A nice walking track.
It's a nice walking track.
Big use for students.
It's not a paved each track.
It's an improvement.
Yeah, it's improved.
Do you have a question, Ms. Thiel?
Uh, I don't have a question. I'd just like to respond to Mr. Haley's comment that I'm not opposed to lighting that. I felt like the lighting was something that could be voted on after we perhaps get the pricing for what baseball is actually going to cost. Um, I feel like our baseball program that we have at Dixon County High School is a program that needs to also be rewarded by some upgrades. And I don't know what the pricing is that we're looking at for that. So that was the reason that I didn't understand, I I just didn't understand the pricing of the lighting in the first place, but that's the that's my rationale in stating how I vote about that. Thank you, Ms. Thiel.
Do we have any other questions about the motion for section D? We vote, please. Open. Ms. Brogdon, yes. Mr. Chadwick, yes. Sister Haley, yes. Ms. Lampley, yes. Mr. Parker, yes. Ms. Thiel, no. Motion carries. Do we have any other questions or comments on the sports complex?
I have a question.
Mr. Haley.
Now that we have voted the project, do we need to go ahead and um, show our interest and a construction manager? Or is that more appropriate when you bring the final design back? What's your opinion from our standpoint?
I would say let's let's bring that back up. Now, a bit longer now, maybe a month from now. Uh, let us get a little bit further into this. I I at this point, I'm promoting the construction manager route. But with turf fields, there are some other similar routes. And I'm not really prepared to, I I need to study up a little bit, definitely know a little bit more about that, but if we could bring that up at another meeting, that'd be great.
Thank you. Looking out for us on that. I appreciate that.
Do you want me to go walk you through this?
I do, yes, sir.
As as we left the last meeting, I was given the charge of of looking at how to make that concession scoring tower, the restroom scenario better. And just as as a reminder to the group, our original scope in this master plan was really just look the bathrooms. You know, and so that's why that that overall, when we came back to you, we added a couple of other things here to make it better. But that really was the gist of the original request of our our services. So in looking at, the first thing you're looking at is just the overall map. That's what you have right now. Um, the the scoring stand concession building is very small. It's right behind home plate. And it's 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 bordered by the field fence and and a parking or drive loop right there, very tight for people to be going to the concession stand and all that. And there's not a toilet room in there. The toilet room, as we know, is down the hill and within the bottom of that existing bigger building to the left. So our original thought was, well, let's do a zigzag handicap ramp to get you to the bathrooms. But then you've just got these single toilet unit, toilet rooms. It's it's not much. It's not really good. So uh, when we left the meeting the other day, I said, let let us kind of study this a little bit. The second was just a blow up black, black and white version. And really the third drawing that I have, the color, little color splash there. This is where I got and I put my pencil down. Um, so if you'll look at that that diagonal hash line rectangle within the bigger rectangle, that that smaller one with red hat uh, dashes, that's the size of the existing concession and scoring building. And then we talked to the civil engineer, we can push your drive loop back about twelve feet. That's it. That's it. And plus it's going to drop it all down the hill. So then it starts sloping. So that's that's difficult in its own right. So my thought was we do a about a sixty-four foot by thirty-four foot a new building right there that would have concessions, toilets and the scoring stand up above. But you're still hemmed in behind home plate. And my partner, whose kids have come through high school more recently and played ball there, he said, what's going to happen? And you tell me, you're going to have all the parents of the pitchers and the batters and the first, but everybody's going to want to crowd up in the bleachers and seats, their their lounge seats all on the back of the fence. And everybody's going to want to get concessions at the same time and go to the back. That whole area is going to be a congested mess. And so that's when I said, you're right. Marshall Duncan is my partner's name. And so I put my pencil down, thought I would show you this, but I I really, if I could wave a magic wand, I think what I would do is reinvent that larger metal building, the existing building beside it on the left. Magic wand, do a two-story piece where you could do all the uh, maintenance equipment in the building downstairs. Do uh, the batting practicing cages downstairs, second floor. The portion of that building closest to home plate, that would be your toilets, your concessions, referee changing room, your technical room, electrical light controls, all that stuff at grade level of the ball field. And then the rest of that building would be locker rooms, player toilets, player, coach, meeting rooms, et cetera, to support baseball. And that's a whole other project. I mean, that's a that's a, and if you look at our original uh, budget number package here in my red letters that say this and that not included, look at B, baseball field, go down to item seven and eight. We talked about an optional new field house of about one point six, one point seven million dollars, not including the pricing. And then the other option was just to do an addition to the field house at about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Which is what we're talking about the existing building, right?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, if I had a magic wand, I would probably do a new, really nice academic, state of the art type building right there and get everything in it. And then behind home plate, you just have a scoring stand. That's it. And and enhance the bleachers, enhance the dugouts, maybe redo all that stuff. Because your field is really nice and the lighting is nice. I I'm nice. I've said that several times. But that current uh, concession scoring thing is so close sandwiched between the fence and the drive loop. It's 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 too tall. It just really is. And that's when I stopped going. So hoping that you'll push that to another project. It gives us more time to study it, really.
I don't know who this is a question for, but do we have to have the drive loop?
I think we do.
I mean, there's other ways to get to
The ag stuff.
To the ag stuff. You can go, well, I guess you'd have to drive through the football.
I'm assuming that drive loop, they would know better than
Yeah.
It's to be there. And as soon as you get beyond the back of that existing building, of course it drops down.
Yes.
And your property lot is just twelve feet or however far over. So that's just a quick snippet of what exercise I would do to show you. You could do that, but I don't think it's the best uh, way to spend your money. And and money aside, I don't think it's the best for the spectator experience. I really don't.
Say we just give you time to study.
Well, it's a whole project with this. I mean, you think about it, if it if it becomes, looking at this over here, you know, the two hundred fifteen plus one point six seven, that's a two mil, two point something million dollar project. And and if we're going to race the clock to get everything else you just voted on, engineered, detailed design, get contact on board, that's going to be pushing us. Pushing me and you. But there are, the other thing is there are a lot of ways to skin that cat, so to speak, to solve that problem. And uh, it needs a little more time. We, it wasn't part of the original goal. I I just, I didn't, we haven't put as much effort into that.
Put a deadline on getting that done. I, we may have to talk about it the next one or the next one.
Yep. Thank you for doing that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Haley.
Got a couple of questions for you guys, and then I'm going to host one by our director and chair and I guess the whole board. The um, these numbers are field estimates. There's more design work can finish up that, and I think in my mind, I'm seeing the scope of this coming together, construction starting right after graduation. We're talking, you know, three to four months. So uh, y'all been waiting for these marching orders as approval to do that. I think it'll move pretty quick. We've worked for a long time on this. I'm not opposed to what Ms. Thiel envisions for the baseball or anything else at the high school. I think the original discussion um, a year and a half ago was we do a master design with the survey and layout. So whatever we did now, whatever we do in the future, whether it's this board or future boards, we'll have a roadmap to get there. I think we've accomplished that. That was the goal. And I think the the baseball constitute discussion, I think it will take some time. It's separate than what we've just approved. I think it also brings to light, you know, the same facilities or discussion from softball standpoint. That can be talked about down the road. But as far as this resolution goes, we had fifteen million dollars that was approved in the resolution and the items that it included was what we've done tonight. When that, with what we've done on the master numbers, there is a chance there could be some changes. The board may want to do some tweaking of the plan. Do you think a ten or twenty percent figure is a good number? Not to spend of our fifteen million. 20% figure is a good number not to spend of our 15 million until the next 60, 90 days till the design is done, uh, to not plan out in case we need that? And then leftovers go towards something then?
Well, in not really contingency, but just for future things like maybe this.
For the next 60 days as you design this, in case we run into some complications or? Well, may have some savings there too. We may be $300,000 at the good.
Yep.
But with that in mind, there was 15 million. And from the list that we were given at the work session, including the $35,000 that hadn't been approved yet for the CTE, we're looking at right at 2.5 million that still needs to go to the middle school for improvements. So while that would need to probably come through the work session, is it appropriate to, to say be thinking what improvements at the middle school? We've talked about windows. I know we can't approve it tonight, but that probably needs to be approved in the next month. We need to get a report to the commission on what we deal with the 15 million. And not that we have two and a half million, we don't know what we're gonna do with. When we know the middle school probably needs four or five million, it's on the resolution. Things I envision there are the window package that, that this group's worked on, uh, to finish the exterior improvements. Uh, that brings that building up a big step. We also were talking, at one time, a long while back, about the, um, bleachers on the football field, not a sports complex there, but a football field. And the, those bleachers probably date back to sometime, I'm guessing in the 60s, maybe before that. But they're, they're not safe. They, I don't use that word lightly. They are not. Uh, no one that's been there would disagree. If you haven't, go look. But, uh, that might get, when we come back next month, have some rough ideas what it costs to do that. Some rough idea with the windows. And then other things that y'all think that building may need, maybe that's more towards the director, um, cause that, that complex may need to be used next fall by our high school. And for our middle school to use that visitor stand, we really shouldn't even let our guests on that. It's definitely good at this point. So just some ideas to maybe start looking at the remainder of the money for that middle school. And then whatever would be left from that, uh, maybe we can point that towards a next resolution or a next, uh, fund of money that would go towards some of these roofs and things we're talking about. And maybe be able to include some of this baseball things in that package there too. Just some ideas.
Okay. I would hope that at Dixon Middle School, we look at the sped space currently because in case, uh, this board has not been in that room, you need to go in where those students go every day where they're trying to learn. And so, um, in this process, I know it's important for all of this to be great, but we've got sped kids that are in rooms now that must be improved. So I hope that we can look at that in this process of this 15 million that we have.
Maybe in, in the next month, our director can get some ideas of what that building needs. I know it's been tossed around, but she's correct on that. That, that space does need some work. And you, you know what it needs. Maybe, uh, seeing now what we may have, keeping some money back to finish this, you know, we can put some, some stuff together on that.
Yes. Uh, Dr. Marvin and I will walk again Dixon Middle School, and we will look at that area.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Uh, now I was gonna get to part of what Mr. Haley said about Dixon Middle School's bleachers. And, and maybe, and I guess, you know, I, I didn't know how much that would entail on our agenda being the Dixie County High School complex versus talking about Dixon Middle School bleachers. But it may roll over a little bit if we talk about their, their football season will need some home games. And I guess the director needs to decide where they're gonna play their home games. And if they are Dixon Middle School, then, uh, I believe we're gonna bring a bigger crowd to the middle school than, than it's used to. And that probably definitely needs to be addressed as we address our high school football field.
I think you're correct in that. And I will get with Mr. Holly and, um, Dr. Duke and Mr. Jay Palace, and we'll come up with the plan.
And I think that y'all's plan to create and do without board approval where you play, you have it. I just see that project wanting to fall, and I don't wanna piece it together and cost more money from that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have DCHS High Wall Construction Management. Mr. Gerald?
I could come in and talk to you about it. Um, Brad and Jeff probably could have done this while he's up here. All I can really ask is, um, for a vote for board approval for construction manager on the high wall. This is the project that Langlisle spoke to y'all about at, uh, Burns Middle School, where he recommends construction management on that job for all the, all the different pieces and parts and oversight of that. So.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve in a second for, to move forward with the construction manager. Would you explain what that entails? Is it just, will you be getting bids for one? Or?
I think he said he was gonna do RFQ and interview some people and then bring that back to the board, best I remember.
That's what he said.
Mr. Hall, is that professional services?
It, it is professional services. And, and, uh, Mr. Wild and I were talking about that because he, he was traveling under a statute. He didn't, he didn't understand that we could
Good.
Uh, so me and I
Thank you.
Have any other questions about it? Do you have the motion?
To approve the hiring of a construction manager for the Dixon County High School.
One second, please.
I'm blaming it last.
Okay.
Didn't go sweep on this mine did. I'm trying to pick up your on before you start hitting.
I think we're ready, Dr. Collins. Voting is open. Dick, yes?
Motion carries. Next. We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Awesome.
And so on there you can see that it has the resignations. If they're classified or certified and then also which school they come from. So just to review that. And then Dr. Sutherland had asked me to give an update on job descriptions. And so as you know, we have been charged with updating, reviewing, and adding additional items to those. So my department is coordinating with other departments such as payroll and then directors as we're reviewing all the job descriptions and adding the items that were requested. And so at this time, we will have about 20 of them for you to review. We'll have those ready for the planning session. We'll get those to you and then you can act upon them as you wish. So again, Dr. Sutherland had asked for me to give you that information. So do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I appreciate your leadership on that. We have lots of field trips. And so I would like to share Dixon County High School Honor Choir will be going to UT Martin. Dixon County High School HOSA has a state leadership conference. It is in Chattanooga coming up in March. Smoky Mountain Cup is with the soccer team Dixon County High School. William James Cheerleaders will be going to Orlando. Creekwood APSU Campus Mass Communications, their honor band. Dixon Middle School National Cheerleading at Disney World in Florida. I believe that's it. On the one that Ms. Lampley is discussing, I did not catch that we had just one female chaperone coach for coed team. And I will get with Dr. Duke to make sure that we have a male chaperone going coed. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
One of the, one of the, one is the field trip.
Let's see.
Is it the choir?
It is.
January 31st.
January 31st.
Can we pull that one out and vote on it separate? And vote to, or we vote to approve pending?
Yes.
Chaperone. Sorry. Move to approve pending chaperone.
Yes.
Keep it with the others. Are you doing just that one separate?
Just gonna pull that one out separate.
Hey, we have a motion and a second for the DCHS Field Trip Choir pending the chaperone, male chaperone being added.
Voting is open. Six guesses.
Move to approve the rest.
Motion to approve the rest of the field trips. Have a second for Ms. Lampley.
Voting is open.
The first thing on administration is the audit committee. And at this time, I don't think we need to form an audit committee because we had no audit findings. So we will just move that until the fall before we have the next audit process. Next, we have strategic planning.
Madam Chair, board members, I laid a, another revision of the five-year strategic plan. It's still draft. I will ask that you approve it at the February board meeting. What I want to do is to make sure that in writing this, you can see I added your pictures to the plan and a few updates with the data for five years. But I want this to be very aligned with our TESA goals that we are setting. And we should write goals that increase every, 5% every year. And so I want to make sure that when I pull my district directors together, that we are looking at the strategic plan that's an E-plan for the State Department, which is based off of TESA goals. And this plan, which too will be aligned with that. So there have been adjustments. Go ahead and read it. You can give me some feedback, but we will add to it for February, but it will be complete by then. Five-year strategic plan.
Any questions? Okay, next we'll move to policies.
Yes, Dr. Winston.
We have the ones that are up for second read that have not changed since they were approved last month on first read. So I'm not sure if we want to do those individually or as a group.
Does anyone know of any specific questions they have on any specific policy for second read? Then I suggest we do it as a group.
Move to approve on the second read.
We have a motion to approve and a second, second read for policies. 2.400, 2.812, 4.802, 5.116, and 5.201.
Voting is open.
Policies for first read, there were a few pulled from the planning session that Mr. Hall is going to give us in bidon before February's planning session. So we only have three that are up for both for first read. And we want to take those as a group or individually.
Individually, yeah. Thank you.
The first one is 1.201 Duties of Officers. And nothing has changed on it since the planning session.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on first read, policy 1.201.
Six guesses.
And carries.
The next is 2.806. And again, no changes since the planning session.
We have a motion to approve 2.806 and a second on first read. Any other questions? Vote please.
And the last one, 6.408 Supervision of Students. This is the policy that we have a 6.4081 that has already been approved on second read. So this one, that is taking the place of this one. Once this one is approved to be struck out on second read, 6.4081 becomes 6.408 and takes its place officially.
Move to strike. Second.
Have a motion to strike 6.408 and a second. Any other questions? Vote please. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our voucher resolution. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, I emailed you earlier today the fact that the proposed resolution, closing government needs Educational Freedom Act. Barreled up to any of these words or anything, I just sent it into your question. Several board members happy to edit it by here. So we also will get a moment. Pleasure of the board to net the request for the decision.
Ms. Lampley.
You need a name to vouchers Education Savings Account. They changed it two or three times, haven't they?
Yeah. I think we did, we probably put those up. The way it's prolonged, you know, voucher, but mechanism towards which they pay the learning, including the period of education savings. It may be, it may be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's. We can put both to be.
Sure. How about we just say we consider the effect that voucher and or educational savings accounts will have on the local school district.
Well, I mean, it has a, the Tennessee, I mean, you know, it has an official name. So why are we not using that official name versus using?
Well, it has an official name, Education Freedom Act. Is that what you're thinking of?
Well, that is the, isn't, I, I think educate, isn't that the one that we're currently under? The new, the new one has like Tennessee, help me out someone. It's Tennessee, yeah, education freedom. Yeah, it's got something about freedom in there. Education free.
It's the Tennessee Education Freedom Act.
Well, where is that?
That's in the first, there are four points. Expresses this opposition to the governor's quote, Education Freedom Act, close quote.
I guess that is, I, then why are we not including that in the last paragraph? Those words.
It's in the third paragraph.
Is it in the first paragraph? Oh, I see. Sorry.
That makes sense. The act establishes.
Yes, I, I didn't see it up there. I apologize.
I don't know how y'all feel about that, but I'm not opposed to the education freedom. If you want to take your child and go wherever you want to, I, I don't not support education freedom. I support a voucher program. It's part, it's what the Freedom Act creates.
I agree. I'm not against education freedom, just the vouchers themselves.
All that freedom.
Do we have any other changes?
the understanding, appreciating flood issues, it almost implies we don't.
Do we don't understand immigration.
An issue.
I, I, I. I think if we drop those two whereas clauses, you left the second, the middle resolved clause, still have the same effect. Probably accomplish the same thing with less. Yeah, I, I think that's a good suggestion, and I'm happy to make. Do you want me to read it, the whole?
Yes, please.
Resolution. Resolution opposing Governor Lee's Education Freedom Act. Whereas the Dixon County Board of Education is responsible for providing a local system of public education. And whereas the Dixon County Board of Education is charged with governing the school district so that all students, regardless of background, needs, or ability, receive the best possible educational opportunities in order to graduate, prepare to enter a post-secondary institution or the workforce. And whereas the Constitution of the State of Tennessee in Article eleven, Section twelve states that the Tennessee Legislature shall provide for the maintenance, support, and eligibility standards of a system of free public schools. And whereas the fulfillment of this constitutional guarantee is heavily relied on adequate state funding, which is vital for equipping schools with necessary resources to serve the various needs of Tennessee students. And whereas Dixon County Board of Education offers an array of specialized programs, including special education services, career and technical education training, aligned with local workforce needs and other services, which are invaluable for meeting both individual student needs and the Tennessee Constitution's requirement of free and public education. And whereas Dixon County Board of Education is a cornerstone of the local community, not only providing educational services to all students regardless of background, need, or ability, but also employing approximately a hundred, a thousand staff members. Whereas Dixon County Board of Education is committed to maintaining local control over its schools, ensuring that they are reflective of the community's needs and values. And whereas Tennessee ranks in the bottom ten states for school spending per pupil, U.S. Census Bureau, and private schools may cost many dollars beyond the quote voucher. Any diversion of needed resources under a voucher program would further diminish the ability for Tennessee public schools to meet mandated accountability standards and address achievement gaps among students. And whereas vouchers fail to provide sufficient reduction in the cost of education that outweighs the diversion of the requisite taxpayer funds. And whereas vouchers eliminate public accountability by channeling tax dollars into private schools that do not face state-approved academic standards, that do not make budgets public, do not adhere to open meetings and records laws, do not publicly report on student achievement, and do not adhere to the public accountability requirements contained in major federal laws, including special education. And whereas education savings accounts threaten the district's ability to maintain the quality of its educational offerings as ESAs would divert state funds to private actors and disrupt local control of education. And whereas voucher programs divert critical dollars and commitment from public schools to pay private school tuition for few students regardless of their wealth, including many who already attend private schools. And whereas vouchers are an inefficient use of taxpayer money because they compel taxpayers to support two school systems, one public and one private, the latter of which is not accountable to all the taxpayers supporting them. And whereas voucher legislation has been consistently rejected by the Tennessee General Assembly as its members understand it is not good for local school districts, including the Dixon County Board of Education. And now therefore be it resolved that the Dixon County Board of Education hereby expresses its opposition to the Governor's Education Freedom Act, as well as any other voucher or educational savings account legislation due to the detrimental impacts these programs will have on our students, schools, and communities. And be it further resolved that the Dixon County Board of Education expresses its opposition to the special means as a, to the special session as a means to circumvent rigorous and open public debate on the merits of any voucher program and the impact such program would have on our community. And be it further resolved that the Dixon County Board of Education urges the Tennessee General Assembly to consider the effect that vouchers and/or education savings accounts will have on local school districts. And instead, seek out ways to support and strengthen public schools throughout this state. This resolution is adopted by the directed School Board of Dixon County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session called the blank day of blank twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve in a second.
Voting is open. Six yeses.
And Carrie.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
I ask in the interest of time that without being approved, that final copy be sent out by Mr. Hall tomorrow morning, if you could, signed and go in beginning of our lectures tomorrow.
Thank you. Next, we have director's report.
Madam Chairboard, just a few happenings happening here in Dixon. We're glad to be back after two cold days. I have to give a shout out to our maintenance department who worked very diligently in checking all of our buildings. And we had a couple of classrooms without heat, they got that fixed. Melissa Garten, a shout out to her and the bus drivers who every day would start those buses, making sure that we would be ready for when we got back in school. So I appreciate their work on that. Our Dixon County High School girls bowling and both Creekwood High School girls and boys bowling made the state tournament. Creekwood High School boys and girls won today are in the final four tomorrow. So congratulations to those young men and women on the bowling team. January the sixth Staff Development Day went well. We went, Dr. Winstead and I visited several schools, but we went to the third grade ELA conversation at the YMCA. We also met with secondary counselors and had a really good conversation. And I think overall, the January sixth teachers, I'm, I'm getting my professional developments wrong. The teachers had a good response when we were there, but I think the best response was having safety in the afternoon. So I have to give a shout out to Mr. Holly for leading those efforts. Every school had a safety conversation, which is needed. So thank you, Mr. Holly. All schools had a safety plan. Directors met at Dixon County High School, so a shout out to Dr. Duke and his team for having the room ready for us to meet. What I like to do is for the directors to get to the schools a little bit early and meet students and staff and let them see that we are in those schools and we want to know what's happening. So good conversations happened at the director's meeting. Budget conversations, I think we finished number fifteen. And good conversations with each of the departments, we still have more to go, and with school leaders. We want to welcome Kristen Farie, who is the new William James Middle School Principal, and it has been a wonderful transition. I have to give a shout out to Dr. Marvin for her leadership there in making sure that Ms. Farie is, any help that she needs. So thank you, Dr. Marvin, with your leadership. I sent out a survey to all the staff and faculty. The questions were, what do you see as the most beneficial shift for the first semester? What has been the most challenging shift for the first semester? And do you have any thoughts or ideas for the director of schools to consider? I have only made it through the first question of reading five hundred and three responses. I will make it to the second question, but I will give you a report of the highlights. So for the five hundred and three question comments, the majority had, some said, I can't see any right now. I think there was probably about twenty-five. At this time, I, I don't see any benefits of the shift. Okay, so stay tuned, they're coming and you'll see that. Transition transparency and your out and about as a director. That was mentioned numerous times. I appreciate directors and central office staff out in buildings and knowing what's happening. I appreciate directors and central office staff listening to our needs. That was mentioned several times. We appreciate seeing maintenance out and about in schools, projects and tickets being filled and completed. That was mentioned numerous times. Collaboration was mentioned. Professional development structured, data collection, data conversation strong. Administrators being out and about, talking, working with us was numerous. These are the things I saw over and over. Then I began to read them out loud with Ms. Ernestine and Dr. Winstead behind me. We gave each other high fives. I said, I can't wait to share with directors, but I will give you a full report moving forward after I get them all read. But those were some of the things. Continue, you know, we had folks say, I knew I cannot, at this point in time, give you feedback on a shift. We had that several times said. So, but for the most part, I would say ninety percent of the comments were very positive. So stay tuned, we'll start question number two and number three, and then we'll give more information to that. Leadership district meeting, our team of folks in the district, we went on a field trip. They rode a school bus to Dixon County High School and Creekwood. We all reminisced about riding the school bus. We had some laughs about what our school bus seats looked like and represented many years ago to what they show today. So it was good, we come together, we collaborate, we talk, but we wanted to see them because CTE is a big push. It is a goal for TESA and moving forward in the future. We wanted them to see how we're spending that money. So we went into Creekwood, the welding classroom, and seeing all of that equipment purchased. They were impressed by what the students were doing. The students were fantastic. They were, they wanted to show us their work. They were actually creating the gift that Creekwood gave to their athletes for the Athlete Hall of Fame. And they were very proud of that. The teacher, which I cannot remember. Fabulous. And he is about teaching these kids, it was wonderful. Then we went, we went to Dixon County High School first, then on to Creekwood, but we went into the Hosa and we visited the health science classrooms. They were so impressed with just the equipment that we had and that was purchased. So I have to give a shout out to Ray LaCombe and his team and the work that he has done past in moving forward of getting better. Great things happening in the school district in CTE. And it's even going to get better. So very excited, I saw a community and community members excited for that. Met with DCEA, Carrie Joyce, this afternoon with Dr. Winstead, great conversation. And we will be doing an MOU training on Monday for two hours with Ms. Antoinette. What is Antoinette's last name? Lee, Ms. Antoinette is going to come down and train us on the MOU process. And so we will have lunch together and collaborate and move with that. We're busy, I can't put it all, it would not fit, front or back. I just want to do a shout out to all of the directors in their departments. We want a model for our teachers, collaboration, transparency, out and about in the schools. We want a model, listening and working together to come up with solutions to make a better school district for Dixon County. Questions for me?
Of course, I'm going to comment.
Yes, sir.
I had a conversation with my doctor and I told him about some of the things that's at the animus table.
Oh, yes.
He, I mean, even, what? You know, I mean, that's, that's a weird, I mean, that's a wild.
It is. We had Dr. Erin Stidle, she is part of our leadership team, she was impressed. Can anyone remember exactly, I mean, she, she was like, wow, this is nice. Of course, they were in the eighty-five, almost ninety thousand dollar range. But the kids love it and what you see. If you ever want to go to Dixon County High School to see that, let us know.
We've been there once.
Yes. Miss Steele, have you been there? Well, we've got to take you. It'll be good. Miss Langley, have you been there?
We have.
Well, we will take you there. Great things happening. Thank you.
Next, we have comments by DCEA.
The microphone this time. I actually came to ask you for a resolution. And you already had delivered one. And we couldn't be more grateful, Mr. Hall, you were an excellent writer. I don't know who your English teacher was, but I need to meet her because those exceptional prose is beautiful. Thank you, all of you. And I can't tell you how much that means on behalf of the eight hundred teachers that you represent, to have your support in that way. We all know what wonderful things are going on in Dixon County, we should shout it from the rooftops. From pre-K where they're getting the foundational skills to all the way to the high school where they're getting industry certifications and college credits and they're coming, we are doing wonderful, wonderful things in Dixon County public schools. And we don't want to sacrifice that for anything. We don't want to ruin that. We have a wonderful community and we need to keep it. And so thank you so much. We also want to publicly thank Representative Jody Barrett, who released a video today about his rejection of the voucher portion of, of the bill. We are hopeful that Representative Mary Littleton will join Representative Barrett in his opposition as this goes to special session on Monday. And again, we just can't thank you enough, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
As we voice some opposition against the person that President Trump has nominated as being a deputy.
You'd have to do a resolution to do that.
I know.
Draft one up next month and bring it if you would.
No, what?
So I think you'd have to do that and bring it for the board, though.
Yeah. So I'm saying as a board, or at least call our elected leaders. I'll leave it up to you.
I guess by far, I'm, I certainly want to get, don't get controversial with it, but the board is a group that votes to take action individually. We're board members, so. We're board members, so. I haven't seen an appointment or nothing about it, just talk about the board procedure.
Any other comments? Comments by board members?
Well, nobody has.
Okay.
Yep. This group's worked hard on not only the project, but, um, hopefully in showing great support for these people that work for us every day. And while we don't always appear to the public that we would agree, but, you know, we can agree to disagree. We come to a conclusion that's best for our system. And I'm, I'm just proud to serve the people that can do that. It's nice to, to be able to disagree and agree at the same time. That's, it's good debate. It's good for our system.
Thank you all for your hard work.
We have a planning session scheduled yet.
February sixth, we are meeting with the legislators, right?
February the sixth, and we will be at the lower campus. We'll have dinner together.
Yeah, it's five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
And then we'll have planning session after.
Legislative session the next week?
Yes, it's the week after, right? Tenth and eleventh.
Yeah, tenth and eleventh.
I was just wondering, do we know, will they be out of? You know, I know that is that meeting, but will they be at a, a special session? It depends on if they go late, but they will let us know if they're not going to be here on time. I mean, we've waited a little.
We never know.
Sometimes, but we really won't know till that day, but they are planning that you want to be here. I just thought perhaps we could, if they, if they can't, let's still dedicate that time and we can use that time for us as a board to do some additional planning, perhaps.
We come together anytime.
Still got to eat.
That's right.
So the work session, not after that?
It is, it is. I just thought if they couldn't, let's just keep working. We will have to, yeah, it has to be publicized what time we start, so. I think we should also think about those families, um, in metro Nashville who are suffering during this time and keep them in our thoughts and prayers.
Absolutely.
All right, meetings adjourned.